Eric Barnum used to be the chief engineer of District Four.
Oh, was he?
And before that...
So, I want to call the meeting of January 7th Planning Board of the Town of Newbury to order. My name is John Weiss, for those who are watching and for those in the audience.
Kathleen Pearson.
George Morris.
Richard Boss.
John O'Connell.
Elizabeth Mitchell.
Martha Taylor, town planner.
So, first order of business this evening is the review of the meeting minutes from December 3rd and December 17th. Has everyone had an opportunity to read both those sets of minutes?
I'm good with the 3rd. I wasn't here the 17th.
Okay, so on the 3rd, can I have a motion?
You're moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
On the 17th?
Sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
George. On the 17th, have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Appearances, Mr. Bashaw. It is Bashaw, right? Okay. Why don't you come forward? We were just made aware of this just two days ago, but if you could present to us what exactly it is, it would be appreciated. Now, only because we're on TV.
I'll get it.
We're going to get you the microphone, and you can talk into the microphone.
You Charlie's son, or his grandson, or nephew, or something?
Related.
You're related.
My father is related to him.
You're going to have to talk to the secretary.
They don't care if they can see you, but they want to hear you. That doesn't work. You know what?
I'm just enlarging my lot a little bit to make it conform.
In conjunction with the solar panel project.
Oh, you're Tommy's son.
Yes.
Can we take and get copies of the board look at?
Sure.
There you go, John. Do you have a Mylar copy as well?
I saw it.
Martha, do you need one or not?
Uh, no, I've seen it.
Thank you.
I have a chair.
Okay.
And what I'm doing is just making like wide from here to there.
So, the dash line, everybody gets that?
Dash line is the existing?
Yes.
Yep.
And what, why is that needed, just out of curiosity?
Just so it would be a conforming lot from the condition.
And you're taking up this property over here?
Yes.
Which you own as well.
Gravel, yes.
The gravel roads right next to it.
And the conforming is lot size or to frontage?
It is now for the, I put an addition on.
You put an addition on the house, you mean?
Yeah, like 10 years ago.
Right.
And it wouldn't be conforming, so I wanted to make it a conforming lot.
Yeah, I think it was actually, it was a setback. It had 200 feet of frontage before, which is required in the business in light industrial. So, it was really increasing the setback to the house.
Oh, okay.
That's good.
Oh, I see.
And it adds about 20,000 square feet to the parcel.
Okay. Okay.
And I reviewed it with the engineer, and he incorporated the changes that I asked for. I believe that we should have three copies of the Form A signed by both parties, since we have two different property owners involved, and the application fee.
Yep. All set.
Okay, good. And you have the one Mylar here?
Yeah, one Mylar.
Okay, good. All right. So...
They got the money?
The most important thing.
All the pieces.
John, any thoughts on this?
I don't have any issues, no.
Anyone else?
There's, well, I'm just going to question, there's a lot of wetlands that are showed there, and it's going to come pretty close. If anybody knows the area, we're sure that we have an access there, correct?
You have frontage off of Route 1.
Yeah.
Two, it's a corner kind of.
I see, okay.
And there's already access, there's access.
Gravel road, yep.
There's the gravel road on to what's called Lot B1 now, already existing, and there's also access on to what's now being called Lot 1.
Solar array is going on B1 only, or B1 and R47?
It's B1, and then it's on the other side of the highline ways.
Over here?
Yep.
Okay. All right. How are you guys doing with that?
We haven't heard much on it lately, but it's all...
That's why I asked the question, because we hadn't either.
It's been all ready, but in the dark, so.
Okay.
Sort of, you know? Everything's gone by, but I haven't heard nothing from them.
Okay.
Waiting for the 90 days then.
Okay. All right, then, we have to have a motion to accept?
To endorse.
And endorse.
I'll make the motion to endorse.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Anything else we need to do?
We need to sign.
Just sign it.
Sign it, I guess, right?
Yep.
Sign all...
Yeah, all the Mylar.
Only John needs to write.
Right. The Mylar and all the copies of the prints, and then the Form A.
I'm sorry. We voted a long time ago to give the chair authority to sign on our behalf.
I'll take that.
Okay, yep.
What is the setback?
Registry, I believe, has that there.
Good.
So, John's the only one that needs to sign.
Side yard setback.
Because he's got a, yeah, I'm sure you know that deal. He's got to sign, they have filed a Mylar.
Did you need three or four of those copies?
We need, we need three, but we can sign four, and then I can, I can get a copy back to you after it's been stamped by the town clerk, if you'd like. If you want to give me, do you have email?
Because there's already a lot.
Okay, because I could either scan it and email it to you, or if you want to stop by.
I can stop by.
Okay, okay. I'll file it with the clerk tomorrow.
If there were not, if we're back in the boonies someplace, then it would be a normal subdivision, and you have to go through the preliminary process.
So, that's four. Do you need more than that?
Where you already have the frontage.
And do you have your, do you have a signing pen for the Mylar?
It's a done deal. It's going through the normal subdivision.
This is not going to work. Oh, my hat breaks.
It's called Form A, or A and R for short, approval not required. Approval is required, but you don't have to go through the whole subdivision.
Endorsement is required, approval is not required under the subdivision law.
Under the subdivision law.
Yeah, it was okay for me.
It's kind of funky, German.
Okay, but it was on two. I printed it out. Piece of paper.
Do you want that back? Proud of my job.
Oh, this is a little miniature.
And then these here, okay. Did you get the, does he get this copy?
Uh, no, he gets the Mylar.
Just the Mylar, that's what I thought. There you go.
Do you know what you have to do? Want Martha to go over? Can you tell him? We need to do, check this way. Is it wet?
No, it would be wet. It dries right away.
Yeah, yeah. So, what you will need to do is take that down to the Registry of Deeds in Salem and get that recorded.
Yep, all right.
And then a copy of that actually gets sent back to our assessor's office.
They'll send it right from Salem, right?
Um, they, yeah.
It always was in the Salem courthouse.
Yeah.
Salem Registry Building.
Registry, which is, yeah, which has moved now. It's, yeah.
It has, yeah.
But that makes it finalized. You have to do that last step.
One more thing I know, there isn't so many more.
Okay.
And then you'll also, you know, whatever, whatever, you know, deed, there will be conveying, you know, that portion of the lot from one to the other.
All right. Okay.
Okay.
And I take this.
You're welcome, thank you.
You're done? Well, except for at the Salem.
Thank you, Boyd.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Do you need a rubber band or anything?
Uh, I'm all set. That'll be all right.
It's easier for the camera, though.
Sayo, how are you?
Good.
Good.
Good night.
See you later.
Good night.
Thanks, Mary.
Stay warm.
All right, Caldwell Farm. Martha attended the meeting with the conservation agent, the owner of 108 Elm, and the two members, two members of the board?
Uh, yes.
Of Caldwell Farm. Do you want to give us an update on that?
Um, that meeting was held yesterday, and it was basically as a follow-up to the letters that Conservation Agent Doug Packer had written to both Caldwell Farm and the owner of 108, because there were encroachments on the wetlands there. So, all the parties met on the site are in agreement about what's going to be done as far as the encroachment is concerned. Doug will write an enforcement action, which basically...
I thought they were already, the Butters had already spoken to Doug, they have not?
Had not until yesterday, I think.
Right.
Okay.
In a formal setting.
In a formal setting, right.
They may have had conversations.
Let's see, okay.
And this was, I believe, the first time that all the parties were together. So, agreement was reached. Doug is going to write an enforcement action, which basically summarizes what needs to be done, which includes getting all the loose materials out of the, out of the wetlands, not getting too far into the leaves and things, because that could create a greater disturbance, moving the sheds off onto the Butters' property.
So, we never discussed the less, meaning exactly what it was. I just assumed it was grass, the things and leaves.
It was leaves, two sheds, some kayaks that are being stored there, some wheelbarrows and various other things.
Stuff.
Yeah, stuff. So, anyway, it's all going to be moved. He has until May 1st to do it, and so, that's it.
And so, our next step is to reconvene a meeting with the Caldwell Board and discuss next steps in terms of moving forward with the trail. And so, that's why I, there's a new president at Caldwell, Barbara Wood, Barbara Wood?
Wood.
Wood. And so, I'll be contacting her tomorrow or the next day to set up something similar to, I think, what we did before, Martha, with other board members. I think that Chris Irons is the only member who's still on the board who we've met with before. I'm not sure, but anyway, so we'll do that.
And Barbara, she was, Barbara was there.
And Barbara, excuse me, Barbara was there, but she wasn't the president.
Yeah, and Maureen, I think, Maureen, right? Yeah.
Okay, so that's good. So, yes.
Would you mind moving down so that she can have a piece of the table and not say?
I'm fine, actually.
John?
Hi.
John, would you mind?
Excuse me. Absolutely.
I guess I better move on, too. I guess so. We can still share the microphone.
Prescriptive. Yes, prescriptive rights.
Sign of respect, gentlemen. Sign of respect.
Okay. Maybe, before we get into the master plan update, do you want to, Martha, remind us of what we were to be doing with the Millennium Engineering reports, and by when?
The public hearing for the 2331 sled road project, Stow Way Storage, is on the 21st.
Right.
And so, you know, the board has indicated that they would like to have the packages beforehand to review them in full size, so that's, that's it.
Right. So, that's, that's it. And then, so that public hearing is set for the 21st. The other public hearing is set for the 13th. How are we doing with that?
Set for the 13th. That's a, that is the joint public hearing with the Board of Selectmen for both Water Supply Protection Overlay and Site Plan Review.
You heard anything back from the engineer, Martha?
I just received a message from Joe. I think he's been in contact with the applicant's engineer. And I will call them tomorrow. He's talked to them about getting revised plans to us before.
I think they'd have to be here before the meeting, from what I hear.
Well, I think Joe should have a chance to review it before the meeting, and the meeting's now a week away, so.
Right, and I need to review them as well.
Sorry?
And I need to review them as well.
Oh, sure.
So, and do we have any further word on, will we have a quorum?
We don't know.
We don't know?
Yet.
Okay.
Advice from Town Council is that if they don't have one, they will have to continue, and the planning board should as well. You know, they shouldn't take any testimony.
Don't take, just continue it?
Yeah.
Well, maybe, okay, all right.
I think we're going to have to, hopefully we'll know before Tuesday.
Okay.
Is Damon back? He was out of town.
Well, I thought he was out of town until this coming Friday, but he had indicated that he wasn't going to be there at the next meeting.
Okay.
Anyway.
All right, fine. All right, the master plan update. I want to hand this out. At our last meeting, oop, at our last, at our last meeting, we indicated we were going to prepare a, whoops, I didn't get one. Oh, I have my own.
I do have one.
I have one. I have one. So, ah, so, we have been kind of putting together our thoughts on this, and we, no, it's not. I don't have it.
One record for this one?
Wait a minute. I have it. I have it. No, I don't.
Yeah, I can listen to you.
All right, good. And so, as we were going through the scope of services and proposed work items, we realized that we had a pretty definitive idea about what we wanted. And so, then we looked at a number of the RFP, RFQs that were online from APA, and so, at least this version. And it's up for discussion, really. There's no, but I, in going through it, I felt that we could probably go with an RFP because we knew pretty much what we wanted to have done, but that we would have a price given in a separate document.
That's a good idea.
So, we, so we were pretty prescriptive here about, here are the work items that we'd like to have done. Here is a very kind of strict way that we want it presented to us, and you present them in one document, which is, we don't want longer than like 10 pages in terms of a proposal. And then, the other document is, here's what we think it's going to cost to do it, and without some...
Why, and the reason being is you don't want to be...
I don't want to prejudice the process of reviewing the proposals, saying that, well, we think this is the best because it's the lowest price. And although price is indicated in the criteria that I laid out here, it's, it's not something that we have in Part A, let's say, but it's in Part B. And so, then you match the price, when you, no, you review all of the things that come in, all of the proposals. You grade them, and then you open up, after you've graded them, then you open up the prices, and you look at the prices, and then you make decisions about the best way to move forward. So, what I'd like to do is have your input, take it home with you, and get to me any comments that you have about things that either I have elaborated too much on, or things that I have left out. And, you know, I think that you'll see some targets here that, you know, saying we'd like to maybe have a decision by February 28th. That's kind of tight, but if you could get me comments by, let's say, a week to 10 days, just by email.
Prior to the next meeting.
Certainly prior to the next meeting. And then, based on that, if it's tight, we could issue the RFP in early February.
Yep.
So, that would be good.
I really like the idea of two envelopes. That's, that's the way it's done today.
Yeah.
That's generally considered the fairest way of doing it.
And it is not a matter plan. It is a master plan.
Matter.
Matter.
Just by way of information, uh...
Your microphone's right there, I'm sorry.
Use that one.
Just by way of information, I'm going to be going to that, Martha was kind enough to send out that notice about the photovoltaic planning, and it's a seminar on it, and it's going to be held on January 20th in the morning, and I'm going to be taking the train down.
Is that MAPC?
Yeah, yes.
They're also doing something on, oh, the phot, I'm sorry, got it. That's exactly what, it's the, it's the solar photovoltaic. Yes, yeah.
So, I'm going to be going to that.
Oh, that's interesting. Yeah, good, good.
I'll go, too.
Yeah, that, that will be interesting, so I'm glad to hear that you're going.
Is there any thought to getting a committee? There will be a committee, of course, but get them on board prior to the proposal so they could be part of the selection process?
Well, oh, I think we can have them part of the selection process. And over the holidays, we, we met with Jeff, actually before the holidays, and got his...
Jeff is, oh, Jeff Walker.
Jeff Walker.
Okay, sorry.
In terms of his input from the board and, you know, members of the community that he felt would be, you know, appropriate to be on the, but we have to now circle back and talk to Tracy about that. And then, we need to have her appoint certain people, we think, to the, to the process. So, I think over the next, by the end of this month, we might have that pinned down.
Okay, so, they'd be on board and...
So, they'd be on board and, and when we do it, and we're looking at the size right now. We had talked the last time we were here that we thought that all board members would be part of the committee, but that we, and, but we would meet, and at your suggestion, with the master plan committee once a month, and they would simply come in to our meetings.
I just didn't want it every meeting.
No, I think, well, you know, the consultants, I have in here that eight meetings with, with us. I'd like everybody's thoughts on whether that's too light or too heavy. So, there's a lot of things. I didn't put question marks in it, but believe me, there's, I'm open to a lot of things. I just made some assumptions about how many meetings we thought we would need to have.
Martha, who was on the last committee?
Um, a lot of people were actually wrong or not able to serve anymore.
I don't think eight is going to be quite enough.
So, I'm just wanting to know.
I think, I'm thinking 15 or so.
Have an idea of...
I'm thinking 15.
Fifty is more like it.
Total.
I would say a dozen-ish.
And you have an idea of what's, would be required, and the process, the beginning process.
Do you want me to pull out the, the old one?
You mean eight for the...
No, I was just, I was just curious.
Oh, five from the planning board and 10 others.
And it was like, how would we know when we...
Oh, wait a second. I'm talking to the number of meetings.
Oh.
And I think...
But it was, you know, it was Marlene.
I think you're talking a dozen-ish.
Could be.
I think Brad would be eight.
Mario Carnavale, Ed Dearden.
But as far as number of meetings required, and kind of like the scope of work, it would almost be interesting to bounce it off of them, since they've been through it, to have an idea, or is this completely different than the last scope of work?
You know, I think the last time they were really kind of crafting something from, you know, from start.
This, this is really an update. I mean, it, what, in 2006, in 2006, if you, have you ever looked at the 1980 plan?
Yes, a long time ago.
Well, it's, you know, it's obviously tight, tight.
Yeah.
And I think the, one portion of it is like seven pages, another part of it is like 10 pages. I think the whole document is maybe 35 pages long, something like that.
That's the one I worked on back in the day.
All right, I mean, it's just, and I understand that. I did an EIR, the first EIR in the state of Maine, it was like, you know, that thick, and now they're all this thick, you know?
So, you're saying the last time it was updated, it was more of a lengthy process than what we'll be going through?
I think so. I do believe so. Because they really started from scratch and completely did a new master plan. And this one, we went through that process when David was still here, when we were going through what are, what the, all the recommendations were, we had that chart. You know, and we had, I went back and I revisited that. Of the 107 recommendations, which were, you know, low, medium, high, 24 have been accomplished and 34 are being worked on, which is pretty high.
Wow, yeah.
So, one of the major things is working with us to go through that and figure out, well, what is still valid and what's not valid. So, that's process. And that's where we want a facilitator slash planner to work with not only us, but members of the community, to pull them into this process. I think that, I mean, I really do, and it's not easy to do, but it's a better document the wider the number of people we have involved, so.
Of course.
So, John's question is, can we have them involved over the next two weeks before the end of January? Hopefully, we'll have a good part of that together by having, sit down with both Jeff and Tracy again and getting their input. Because there's going to be a, a good number of town employees who we think ought to be on this.
Oh, yeah, certainly.
You know, and we want to make sure that they understand the magnitude of the commitment and things like that. So, so anyway, so if you could get comments to me by, before the next meeting, I'll send you out a reminder about when I'd like them, okay?
What's the end date, the completion due date for the plan itself?
Well, right now, oh...
I mean, do we have a goal by which that...
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet. What we do have is a goal of, I have in this document, that we want to have it out, we want to have a consultant selected by February 28th. That might be too tight. And that we'd like to begin work by April or May, May. You know, all the contract negotiations, that might be tight, too, but that's what I've got in there.
But for you, I guess the question is, is that something that will be accomplished within over the year or next year?
Oh, I think it's 12 months to 18 months.
Yeah, I would think so, too.
I mean, process takes time, and that's what we're after here, is process.
Did I understand you correctly that you're envisioning eight meetings?
Right now, it's eight, but I'm completely...
For a year's project?
No, no. Eight meetings where the consultant is the facilitator.
Right.
We may choose, for example, there's a number of work items, and you'll see this, where it says the town planner and MVPC and others will be doing the work. Well, in those things, we'll probably have meetings, but maybe the consultant doesn't have to be part of it.
I got you, yeah.
So, we haven't figured that out yet, but for areas such as history, natural resources, community facilities, and transportation are not part of what we're recommending the planning consultant to do.
Okay.
Because MVPC provides almost all the transportation stuff. Community facilities, you know?
We have an idea of that.
We've got an idea on that, what we're doing, you know? where it says the town planner and MVPC and others will be doing the work. Well, in those things, we'll probably have meetings, but maybe the consultant doesn't have to be part of it.
I got you, yeah.
So we haven't figured that out yet, but for areas such as his, history, natural resources, community facilities and transportation are not part of what we're recommending the, the planning consultant to do.
Okay.
Because MVPC provides almost all the transportation stuff. Community facilities, you know?
We have an idea of that.
We've got an idea on that, what we're doing, you know?
Right, historical resources.
Historical resources, we-
Historical commission.
Is, we've got that. And then the natural resources, the one area that we made the most extraordinary progress from the last plan. And I just think a lot of stuff is there. And I think that Martha and others can put that together. That's all. Okay?
I did go over this while I was waiting to be called into the jury assembly hall. And I, well, one question I had is there's no mention here of the open space and recreation plan. Are you thinking that that's-
No, I'm not. I, when I talked to you this morning, I said, well, I worked on this last night. And what I forgot to tell you was, but I didn't include, and it wasn't purposeful. I just didn't include it because I didn't have the time. So we have to include something about the open space plan that has to be updated.
Yeah, I would think so, yeah.
So maybe that's your task for the, is, because you know more about it than I. Were you on the, on that committee?
I was. I was.
Is there any need to make that a separate plan?
Yes.
Yes.
There is?
Yeah, by law.
Oh, yeah, oh, okay.
By law.
The state requirements for the open space and recreation are very stringent, much more so than the master plan.
Ah.
Which is interesting, when you think about it. Yeah, it is. Well, you know, some states require master plans, Florida, California, the like, New York, but Massachusetts doesn't just, does never require them. But they do require open space plans.
Right. I mean, there'll be a lot of dovetailing between the two, which I, is, which is why I think they should track separately. I mean, together, but-
I mean, the open space plan is based on demographic and other kinds of data, so you just, you know, take that stuff that's being developed and-
Lot of extrapolation.
And the natural resources, but we need to add a recreation component and so on and so forth, so.
Get this back to me when you do.
Well, I give it to you right now.
Okay.
You're done.
Um, okay. Any, any questions on a? Zoning amendments, the accessory apartment bylaw.
Um.
Martha, I'm looking your way.
Yes, I know. I can feel it. Um, I unfortunately don't have any, any revisions to present tonight. I actually worked on the subdivision rules and regs, which I want-
Oh, God bless you.
Which I, I have a few things to go over with.
I told her to do that.
Thank you, John.
Um, so what I'd like to do is have that ready for next, the next meeting along with the things that, that Sam has fed to me that we're gonna work back and forth on.
Yeah.
And then the board will need to prioritize what will go before the annual town meeting. I did put together a schedule, which I sent out to all of you, which unfortunately I did not print out, but I can do that now if you'd like.
No, I, I-
And I did talk with, with John about it this morning, and it seems a little bit too-
Aggressive.
Aggressive. So we're gonna look at trying to move some of the deadlines back a little bit, but still working within, you know?
I, I would just move them back one-
One session.
One session. And so instead, well, the planning board vote to refer zoning amendments, I don't think we'll be ready by the, by, that's only two meetings away.
Right.
And we don't have the document. So, you know? So I think that that's gonna be on the eighteenth, is that right? Yeah, on the eighteenth. So hopefully, they'll aim for that. So I think after the subdivision regs, Martha, if we can, you know that, focus on-
Just for the new members on the board, if we redo something for the fall meeting, we need to start working on that like me and you in order to make the deadlines. See if we can even get to the spring meeting and then we already have to jump onto them. And a lot of times where, in the past, we've been so burnt out that it doesn't happen. Just see what happens along.
But the, the state requirements for the process of, of making zoning amendments is very, very specific in terms of what needs to be done and the timeframe that needs to be followed and so on and so forth. So that's what we really have to, to work towards. And it, it doesn't give us a whole lot of latitude, especially in the summer if we're gonna try to do something for the fall. And if, if procedure isn't followed exactly correctly, the attorney general's office will kick it back. That has happened when deadlines haven't been met and that kind of thing. So, kind of sets the framework for us.
John, I, at the last meeting, I had raised the question of maybe including something in the tax mail or something of that sort. And I spoke with some, about people certifying that they lived in the, in their primary residence, the accessory apartment, for at least six months. And I spoke with Michelle, I spoke with Diane, I spoke with, what's the town clerk, what's his name? Leslie.
Leslie.
And they all said pretty much the same thing, that there was no mechanism really for doing that. It could be set up. So I, I went to, I managed to catch Sam, and he said that, he said enforcement is the most difficult part of the problem. And he said he didn't think that including a mailer, even if they signed you, was really gonna improve compliance. He felt that what we had now, where people had to certify, well, it would, it's, it's something that's already set up where they have to be a resident of the town, and they also have to be on the voter registry, the registered voter here. And he said, that's as much as you could probably get. And if we tried to do anything more than that, you're just not gonna get any bang out of the buck. So. But he, he also said that whenever he speaks with some of his counterparts in other communities, the issue of accessory apartments and enforcement and compliance always comes up. It's the most difficult part of the inspectional process, or one of the most difficult parts.
Okay, thank you.
Along the lines of the accessory apartments, I've, I've had a little conversation with Howard Snyder, the planner over in Georgetown. I think I sent you all the-
Oh, oh, yes.
Affordable thing. And that was actually initiated by their Affordable Housing Trust. And I'm still not clear on what mechanism they would go through to get those units on the subsidized housing inventory, but it would be something through DHCD. So I'm gonna continue to follow up on, on that and see where that goes.
It, it, it appeared to me that it is a function which could happen of having a willing property owner say, yes, I'm willing to enter into such an agreement and, and ensure that the property remains at, you know, a thousand dollars, whatever the rent may be, for an extended period of time, and go through the process of registering with DCHD.
DHCD.
DC, DCHD, whatever it is. I know we talked about it just at the last meeting and felt that we'd, we'd be surprised if property owners were jumping up and down to do that. But I'd be interested to see what happens at Georgetown.
Yeah, I'd be interested as well. I was interested also to find out that it didn't come from the planning board or the planning department, that it was initiated by somebody else in town. So, but Howard says that it seems to have pretty broad support.
I think it's interesting that Georgetown is initiating this, and Georgetown is the only community that has completely, is completely in compliance with the Affordable, the number of units.
Right, they had, they had some forty Bs go in there in a very short-
They have, they have a lot of land.
That's gonna make a difference, I know that.
They have a lot of land and they, anyway, they've had a lot of projects that have been built. Okay. So, so we talked about schedule, other, other amendments, do you wanna, is there anything else you have, Martha? I don't think so.
No, not at all.
Okay. And then do you wanna give us a, we, we all met on December ninth, municipal building committee, and is there, has there been progress since then? I was just curious. I know it's the holidays and Eric was busy. I was just curious.
Um, we had a meeting yesterday morning to sort of try to figure out next steps. And we had the, the, we were approached by Protection Two regarding their land on the other side of the fire station. Nothing has been formalized regarding that. And Tracy's gonna be following up with a letter to, to them to, to try to-
Tracy, Tracy.
Um, you know, to con- confirm interest and, and so until we, until we really have anything to say about that, we're kind of, you know.
So they really just haven't, that's, oh, that's, okay, all right. Oh, with Marsh Meadows, with Marshall.
He has, um, he, he's complied with everything that needs to be done now. The few outstanding things were, you know, the conservation restriction, which the board voted on a while ago.
Right.
Um, all the documents have now been recorded at the registry. I have copies of the registered. I actually have the originals of the, the recorded documents. The road was finished a long time ago. Our engineer, Scott Patrovitz, signed off on the as-built and all of that. So basically, they've submitted the letter requesting release of the performance guarantee.
Is there any reason we shouldn't? I, I, I'm surprised it hasn't happened.
I see absolutely no reason. It was really, it, I think the conservation restriction was really the final thing because it kept getting kicked back by the state.
Right.
And they've signed off on it. Everybody's happy.
Yeah, I mean, I, and I know that David spent a lot of time on this and I thought he was okay with it just before he left and stuff.
Yep, so.
Yeah, we were, we were ready to sign off for a long time ago.
I thought so. I thought so.
So there's no issues on our end.
No, so what do we need to do?
So I, I, I would recommend that the board just make a motion to release the performance guarantee. I don't have the exact sum, so we'd need to-
We can say to, to be determined by you.
Right, in coordination with the town accountant.
And also release the engineering review.
The engineering, which is about twenty-three hundred dollars.
Has Jim said grace on the, on the road, Marsh Meadow? There was a bit of a road there, was there not?
Well, it was a very substantial road.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But it wasn't a, it didn't have a whole bunch of BMPs and detention bonds and-
It's a, it's a private road.
It's a private road.
It's a private road.
And it was done in accordance with-
Okay.
There's, as far as I know, that nobody needs to sign off on anything. We're just ready to go.
Yeah.
I think so.
Yeah. And we, I thought we went to sign off there before and we thought it was all set and then something got kicked back. So-
It was the conservation restriction.
There's no reason for us to look into it.
So.
George, did you get all that? Can you make a motion?
I move whatever Martha said. Now, I move that we release the performance bond on Marsh Meadow subdivision.
I'll second it.
All those, do we have to do one at a time?
Oh, no.
And then, okay, and then also-
Include the release of securities or cash.
And the release of the engineering review funds.
The engineering.
Securities.
Okay. And review the, and release the engineering review funds.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, I think, as a separate.
Do you like that separate?
Separate, yeah.
Okay, all right. So sec-, did you second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Have the second one on you, release.
Okay, move we, the board, we release the engineering funds that were held to complete the project.
Second?
Second.
Along with any accrued interest.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'd be very happy.
He should, well, yeah, he's, all right, MVPC. I, I asked, this is a, let me just see if I can give you a summary of this. In 2009, the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission produced a very thoughtful report, which looked at every town in their region. And their region is what you'd expect along the Merrimack. It doesn't quite go as far up as Lowell, but it's Lawrence and Havrell and Andover, North Andover, Georgetown.
Methuen.
Methuen, Newburyport and Amesbury, et cetera. And, and us. And us. And it was about a two-hundred and some odd page report. Well, they are updating it. And I thought it would be appropriate if I could get input from the board members. So I didn't copy the entire report because that's really too much. And, and really, this is not a huge requirement, but I, I'd appreciate any thoughts you have on reading this. It also is the kind of document that would, I think, be helpful to read because it gives you, where are we relative to our neighbors? And it gives you a lot of good information in terms of population growth and housing growth, and who's growing and who's not growing, and what are, what are the demographic profiles in Lawrence and what are the demographic profiles in Havrell? And it's kind of interesting, you don't think it's interesting?
Oh, no. They're definitely unique. I'll put you on that. We stand out.
So we are unique. And we are the only town that didn't grow in the last four years.
I think we lost population.
Population-wise.
We added housing units, but we lost population.
We lost population. So in, in the Merrimack Valley Planning region, we are the only town that lost population. So, so I invite you, so I've made copies of this, and if you could get, now, this is a little more strict. If, if, if you're interested in reading it, I'm gonna hand them out. And I, but I need the comment by a week from Tu-, no, from Tuesday, meaning the twelfth. Is that the twel-, yes. Twelfth. Because I am meeting with the board next Thursday, and I have to have my comments all in place. And then as the, as our town planner, you are getting comments as a, to the professional group? Is that how it's done?
Yes, yeah. Dennis has asked, we have a planning director's meeting tomorrow, and he's asked for our comments back.
So just let me, just send me your comments when you, if you, are you gonna send them like an email or what?
Um.
You wanna steal some of ours?
Oh, yeah. She's wicked smart.
She is.
No.
Are you handing them out now?
I am. I am. I am, I am. So here are, and Martha, you don't need it because, do you need, did you need one of these?
No, I don't.
Okay.
How often are these revised?
Five years. So, so they're like, like they should be done, you know, like ours master plan should be done every five years. Here, I'll give it to you anyway because I have an extra one.
If anybody wants to see the, the entire thing, it is available online.
Well, it's available online, or I, I don't know if I can even, it's such a big file. I don't even know if I can-
It came through to me, so.
Did it?
Yeah.
So would, if you would like, I can email you the entire document as well for, for support if you want it.
Reach side ever.
The twelfth.
Fruit Street.
Anytime.
Is this the title of it or what?
The, yes.
Yeah, Merrimack Valley Priority Growth Strategy. And so, and so they're in the process of, of updating this document. And also, just, just to give you, I've given you generic information like demographics that I thought was, was interesting, and housing information. Then I've culled out information here about all the things that they recommend for Newbury in terms of priority areas. I also included Newburyport and Rowley just to give you a sense of what they're recommending occur in those communities as well. And then finally, the last four pages are what they recommended in 2009. So you can begin to take a look at the, what the difference is between then and now, okay? So I'd really appreciate your input on that. Okay? And I think that's all I've got on that. I'll get out of here. So do we, so that's also my liaison, my liaison report on MVPC is that we meet on next Thursday, and at that meeting, we will be, it's a public hearing on response to this document for the whole region, so.
Are you enjoying being on that call?
Yeah, I am. It's good.
I thought you found it interesting.
Yeah, it is interesting. It is interesting. I mean, Dennis is an interesting, Dennis DiZoglio, who's the executive director, he was just appointed by the, by the governor to be the, the head of the citizens watchdog group on the, for the casinos.
Oh, cut it out, really?
Yeah, yeah. I don't know where it's going with that. What do you think? You think the mayor's got a chance in his lawsuit?
You're not on the game. You're supposed to comment. Shh.
Okay. Any other liaison reports? Concom?
Don't have anything. We haven't met since the last meeting.
Okay. And what about ZBIA? We're just doing that. Okay. Word of selectmen, anything new? With that, I will call the, I will ask for adjournment on the shortest meeting I can ever, ever remember for the Newbury Planning Commission.
That's because it's fifty degrees out.
Motion?
Motion?
I'm second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night.